Actually longer because my parents have been there fifty-five. We did not. We've tried several attempts. No one's ever gotten this far.
Almighty God, we ask for your presence here tonight to be with all involved, to be with the counselors, to be with the citizens, to be in the very building itself. Gracious God, we ask for your presence within our community, helping us to be a city on a hill, to be a beacon into the world of not only a wonderful place to live, but a place that is Spirit-led. And gracious God, we pray especially for our first responders who are traveling our streets, who are providing safety, who are providing the way of life that we take so for granted. And gracious God, be with us, be with this work that is done here tonight, that it all be to your glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are looking for a church, if you're not a member of a church in Smyrna, or if you want to change, the folks at Smyrna First United Methodist Church, I'm sure would love to have you. It's the big church on Concord Road, right there. Yep. Eight forty-five, what was that? Let's see, you got, can't get out of that. Agenda changes, the only agenda change that we have is out of May under land issues, zoning and annexation. Once we get to that issue, that issue will be tabled. Other than that, there are no other agenda changes. Under the Merrill Report 2018-267, recognized city of Smyrna employees Mike Higginbottom and Takara Brown is recipients of the City of Smyrna Award for Ongoing Excellence in Customer Service and the Jockwell Award for Service Excellence in Action. I'll turn that over to Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My office recently instituted a new customer service program for city employees. Employees can be recognized for the category of ongoing excellence in customer service or the Jockwell Award for Service in Action. Employees can be nominated for their excellence in customer service by a department head, a fellow employee, or a resident or citizen. Recipients are selected on a quarterly basis by the Employee Awards Committee that is appointed by me as a city administrator. And at this time, I'd like to ask Maxwell Ruppersburg, our special projects coordinator, who is a member of that particular committee, to announce our first quarter winners.
Thank you. So as you heard, for quarter one of 2018, Mike Higginbottom is being recognized with the City of Smyrna Award for Ongoing Excellence in Customer Service. Mike was nominated by his fellow staff for his positive demeanor at all times, his willingness to help residents and go above and beyond to ensure that everything gets resolved, that they leave having their issue resolved and with a smile on their face. And Ms. Takara Brown was awarded the Jockwell Award for Service Excellence in Action. She was nominated by her supervisor for going above and beyond when she, she's an operator with the E-911 Center, and she received a call that was barely audible. And she heard a lady saying that she had fallen. They could not track where the phone number was coming from. And she used the available resources and, you know, critical problem-solving skills in the moment to determine the most likely residents dispatched medical services. They entered the home and found a woman who had fallen and been there for several days and likely would have died without, in several hours, had she not received detention. So she is receiving the Service Excellence in Action. And we have certificates for both. Can you please come forward?
They both have smirks on their faces. I know how long Mike's been here, thirty-something years?
Thirty-two.
You're right behind me. And how long have you been with us? See, that's great to have somebody that's been here that long, somebody that just got on board, that's already doing a great job. So we thank y'all very much for your service and your dedication and making our citizens happy, so. Anything y'all want to say?
Nope, I do appreciate it.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. Also, under the mayor's report, we do have an election, a runoff election that's coming up July... Somebody help, twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth. Is there any candidate here that would like to make any brief comments? Give you that time. Tim Gould is here. He'll step forward and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Tim Gould. I'm running for the open seat for Ward Six. Election is July 24th. If we can mark it on our calendars and come on out and vote, we'd appreciate that. Running to support residents, make sure they're engaged in any zoning activities, have a voice in the process, support our schools, and be responsive and proactive for the residents of Smyrna and Ward Six. Thank you.
Anyone else? It's Adella Morse here. I didn't see you back in the back. You were slumped down.
I snuck in, I snuck in a little bit late. It was a great election. However, I would really like to see more people turn out out of about fifty-five hundred registered voters. In Ward Six, we had about thirteen hundred people. So, community engagement is one of the things in my platform. And getting more people to come out to vote, engage in the voting process is something that I think is high priority for me. Tim and I, you know, see each other at all these events. It's a very pleasant interaction. It's been a good campaign. And I just say, everyone come back out and vote for me, please. And I think early voting is on July, starts July 2nd. So, and thank you. Thank you for letting me have a word. Thanks.
Anyone else that's made it into a runoff? That's, I think we have a governor's race and we have a couple of other state races, so hopefully they'll get some folks out. But I think we did have almost thirty percent. Is that right? Twenty-six percent, which is sort of high for a city race. But I don't know how you get them out. I know y'all both spent a lot of money with signs and information, so I don't know how you do it, so. Okay. Item four, land issues, zonings and annexation. A 2018-270, public hearing zoning request, Z-18-011. Modifications of approved site plan and building elevation, sixty-one point eight-eight acres. Landlot sixty-one, one seventy-one, one seventy-two, one seventy-four, one seventy-five, one seventy-six, two eighty-nine. Riverview landing on Riverview Road between Nichols Drive and Dickerson Drive. Ordinance companies, this will be tabled till July 16th. I'll turn that over to Mr. Fennel for that motion.
Mr. Mayor, we'll bring the details at that meeting on the sixteenth. But I, it being in Ward Seven down on the river, I just make a motion to table item number 2018-270 to date certain July 16, 2018, for the mayor and council meeting that night.
Have motion to table.
Second.
Second, Mr. Welch. All those in favor, the motion, please vote. Approve six-zero. Item four B, under land issues, zonings and annexation, 2018-256. Public hearing approval of a code amendment to Section 602 of the zoning ordinance and the adoption of the city updated zoning map, City of Smyrna. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The Community Development Department is recommending the formal adoption of the city's updated zoning map by amending Section 602 of the zoning ordinance. Section 602 references the official zoning map of the City of Smyrna dated August 19, 2013. The city has made numerous updates and amendments to the zoning map since that time, and these changes are not referenced on the official zoning map. The proposed code amendment was heard at the June 11, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and it was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the adoption of the updated zoning map with amendments. And Community Development Director Ken Sudrith will give you more background.
Mr. Sudrith?
Thank you. This actually is a housekeeping-type item. We update the zoning map every time y'all approve something. But there's a difference between what we do and what the official map is. It's kept in Ms. Graham's office as the city clerk. If somebody wants an official copy of the map for her to be able to certify that, she will give them the map and then all of the amendments. So on occasion, we need to consolidate all that and basically go back to zero, and so that one map would do it. My goal in the future is that every twelve to twenty-four months, we'll come back with this in the future, just to make it easier on the city clerk's office who get those kind of requests. So that's what this is about. And there are no changes. Everything that you've approved is on there. We're not changing anything that hasn't been discussed. There's no corrections of any errors or any of that kind of stuff. If we ever discover that, that would be a different process. This is just formalizing what you've already done.
This is a public hearing. If anyone here is in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment, speak for or against these code amendments. Okay, let's record show there is none. Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Explained very well by Mr. Sudrith, and no public comment being heard. As we close the public hearing, I want to make a motion to approve item 2018-256, approval of the code amendment, Section 602 of the zoning ordinance and the adoption of the city's updated zoning map, City of Smyrna, on this date. I move.
A motion, second, Mr. Norton, to approve these code amendments. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six-zero. Thank you very much. Item C is 2018-160, public hearing zoning request, Z-18-008. Rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for four single-family homes at a density of four point zero eight units per acre. Zero point nine eight acres landlot, four eighty-eight, twenty-six sixty-four, twenty-six seventy, and twenty-six eighty Grady Street. Pritchard Brothers is the applicant. Ms. Jones, say background, please.
Pritchard Builders Incorporated is requesting a rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for four single-family homes at a density of four point zero units per acre. The existing home at twenty-six sixty-four Grady Street will be demolished, and the property will be combined to create three new lots and homes. The rezoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the May 14, 2011, meeting, and it was recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed rezoning with conditions, and Rusty Martin, our senior planner, will provide more background.
Is the applicant here? This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this rezoning request? Let's record show there is none. This is Ms. Blackburn's district. Ms. Blackburn?
Rusty, I'll let you take it.
All right. This rezoning request went to the Plan Zoning Board at the May 14 meeting. Obviously, it was recommended for approval by a vote of six-zero. The subject property is located on the east side of Grady Street. It is basically across from the entrance from Grady Manor. It is approximately just under one acre in size. And it is composed of three lots with two single-family homes on two lots and an accessory structure on the third lot. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from R-15 to RAD conditional to tear down one of the single-family homes in the accessory structure and build three new single-family homes. And they'll reconfigure the fourth lot, and I'll show you that in a second. With this request, they are not requesting a land use change, a future land use change for moderate-density residential. All the property that surrounds this site has a moderate-density residential land use classification, which is up to four point five units per acre. So the proposed density is four point zero eight units per acre. So no change in land use is required. Here's the proposed site plan. This is the existing home that will remain. The lot will be reconfigured, and some of the property will be given to the proposed lots to the south. These are the three new proposed homes for the site. With this request, the applicant is proposing the following setbacks. A front setback of twenty feet, side setback of five, and a rear setback of twenty. These are the locations of the proposed stormwater detention facilities. In addition, there are five variance requests associated with this rezoning. The first deals with the lot size reduction from fifteen thousand down to nine thousand four hundred and forty-two. The next one is a lot width reduction from a hundred feet down to fifty-five feet. And the next one is a front setback reduction from thirty-five feet down to twenty, then a side setback reduction from ten to five feet, and finally, a rear setback reduction from thirty to twenty feet. Staff has reviewed these variances per this request and against other infill developments. Staff is supportive of all the proposed variances. Here are the proposed home elevations, the type of architecture the developers posing for the site. These are the pictures of the subject property, and then pictures of surrounding properties to give you some context. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for the development of the three new single-family homes with conditions. First are the standard conditions that apply from Section 1201 that deal with building composition, stormwater management, utilities, traffic improvements, burning of debris, streetlights, and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions we're requiring, some special conditions. Number ten deals with the setbacks. Staff is proposing a front setback of twenty feet, a side setback of fifteen, and a rear of thirty. Number eleven is a reduction in lot size. A minimum lot size, nine thousand four hundred and forty-two square feet. Number twelve is, deals with a minimum floor area for each home of eighteen hundred square feet. Number thirteen deals with the minimum driveway length of twenty-two feet for each unit, and as well as each unit should have a two-car garage. Number fourteen requires a ten-foot right-of-way dedication along Grady Street. Fifteen requires a developer to be responsible for any water and sanitary sewer improvements. Sixteen deals with the protection of trees during land disturbance. Seventeen ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted. And eighteen deals with the elevations submitted and ties the approval of the zoning to those elevations. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Martin?
Hi, I have a question. When you were going over those variance requests, and you had them up there, and I'm looking at it here, too, and then when you went over those last thing, you know what I'm talking about?
That was an error on that slide. I caught, I should have caught it before. But it, we don't support the reduction in the rear setback because they don't need it. If you see, if you see in the site plan, the homes are pulled up to Grady Street. There's no need for a twenty-foot rear setback when they're not pushed to that line.
Okay, so we vote on it.
That's an error, but in your packet, the staff recommendation says twenty, or says thirty feet rear setback, which is our proposal.
Okay.
I've talked to Steve about it, and I don't think he has an issue with that recommendation.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any questions, any other questions, Mr. Martin? Steve Pritchard is here. If you want to come up, Steve. Does he need to be sworn in, Scott? For those that, Pritchard Brothers started in Smyrna years ago revitalizing our downtown, and they've done a great job with their housing, and we're proud that they are, they continue to redevelop Smyrna in a small way. Scott, you want to?
I do.
If you'll tell us who you are and...
My name's Steve Pritchard. Y'all probably know. My brother Frank and I have been partners for over forty years, and we've done a lot here in the city of Smyrna. We built Parkview Village, and I also lived there for two years. A lot of my family lived in the surrounding areas on Bank Street and also on Guthrie Street. And we've also done a lot of renovations on some of the older homes. Currently doing one on Hillsdale Street right now. And I just finished two new homes on Bank Street, one of which is already closed and one is under contract. The home, the project that I'm doing, as Rusty introduced you to, is a, there is an existing rental property that we have on, at twenty-six seventy Grady Street. And I, we carved off the first twelve foot of that lot in order to give us enough square footage to, that would meet the guidelines of the city for rezoning it to an RAD. So therefore, we included that house into our project, the rental house, so that it had to be a part of the project because it was changing from R-15 to a little less density. So, or should I say, a little more dense. So the three homes that I'm going to be building are very similar to the ones I've built on Bank Street. I don't know if you're familiar with the two, one at ten sixty-two and one at ten sixty-eight Bank Street. It was very similar to one of the elevations he showed you, one of them is. I don't know if there's anything else I can add, other than, you know, we love building here in Smyrna. We enjoy dealing with the community development and all of the council members, his staff, everybody. They're just terrific. Y'all are doing a wonderful job with the infrastructure around Smyrna, and it's drawing a lot of people. We're glad to be a part of it.
Ms. Blackburn, anything?
Yes, Mr. Pritchard, thank you so much for the work that you do. I've had an opportunity to see the two developments that you have going in now, and they're very nice. What's the price range of the three that you're going to be?
These three are going to probably be in the mid-sixes, mid-sixes, yes. They'll probably be about three thousand square feet, maybe, probably a little bit more. Probably more like about thirty-three hundred square feet, approximately. Things vary a little bit by the time we break ground, as you know, and finalize on the plans. But that's the game plan as we are today.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions?
I was just going to ask, are you agreeable to that one condition that Rusty was talking about a while ago, instead of where there was a request for the twenty-foot setback, and they said that it's not needed?
Yes, ma'am. It's currently a thirty-foot setback now, and I'm fine with leaving it just the way it is. It doesn't encroach on, I don't encroach on the thirty-foot, so it'll be fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Blackburn?
All right. Mr. Pritchard, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve 2018-106, zoning request, Z-18-008, rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for four single-family homes at a density of four point zero eight units per acre. Zero point nine eight acres landlot, four eighty-eight, dash two six six four, two six seven zero, and two six eight zero, Grady Street. Pritchard Builders with conditions.
Have motion. I hear a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item D, 2018-225, public hearing zoning request, Z-18-009, rezoning from G.C. to O.D. conditional for the development of a one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five square feet, climate-controlled self-storage building, two point seven one acres. Landlot eight-ten, twenty-five-twenty Spring Road, twenty-five-twenty Spring Road LLC. The background, Ms. Jones?
Twenty-five-twenty Spring Road LLC is requesting to rezone the two point seven one acre property located at twenty-five-twenty Spring Road from G.C. to O.D. conditional to redevelop the site with an one hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five square foot climate-controlled storage facility. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the June 11, 2018, meeting, and was recommended for approval by a vote of six to one. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request with conditions, and Rusty Martin will give background on this one as well.
Is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone here is in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning, this rezoning request? Okay. Mr. Martin, Mr. Norton, if you want Mr. Martin to give the...
That'd be great. Thank you.
Background, then we'll go from there.
All right. This request went before the Plan Zoning Board last Monday night, June 11. They made a recommendation for approval with staff conditions by a vote of six to one. The subject property is located at twenty-five-twenty Spring Road. It's currently zoned general commercial. It is occupied by vacant retail center. The applicant is proposing to rezone that retail center, demolish it, and redevelop it into a hundred and thirteen square foot climate-controlled self-storage facility. The future land use for the area is Regional Activity Center. It's all colored in purple. All the surrounding sites around the subject property are all Regional Activity Center as well. There is no land use change required for this rezoning. Here's a picture of the proposed site plan for the site. You got the new three-story, one hundred and thirteen square foot climate-controlled building with proposed setbacks, fifty-foot front setback off of Spring Road, a side setback of thirty, and then a rear setback of ninety. With this proposed building, the applicant is proposing approximately four thousand square feet of commercial or office space on the ground level. There's a ten-foot landscape buffer along the eastern and southern property line. And then with this request, there's also a twenty-five-foot right-of-way dedication along the rear property line for a future road. With this request, there are seven variances. The first dealing with the location of a sign. The second deals with the reduction in parking from eighty-eight spaces down to thirty spaces. And that's merely due to the use on the site. Self-storage facilities do not generate a ton of traffic. They provided us use logs... They provided us use logs from their other facilities that are similarly sized and they range between six and 30 trips per day. So they made a request to reduce the required parking from 88 spaces down to 30. The next deals with, is a Spring Road corridor design district and that is, deals with the orientation of the parking. The next one deals with the building width in relationship to the property furniture and since the site bottlenecks up at the front along Spring Road, that's what requires the variance from the corridor design standards. The next deals with setback from residentially zoned property from 50 to 30 feet. And the next deals with a side setback reduction from 35 to 30. And the last deals with a rear setback reduction from 100 down to 90. And staff is supportive of all those requests. These are the proposed building elevations for the site, working from the top and moving down. The top elevation is your eastern elevation and that's the side that's next to the apartment complex and racetrack. As you move down, the next one, that is northern elevation and that is directly behind the racetrack canopy. And the next elevation down will be your western elevation. This will be where your ground-level office and commercial space will be in addition to their leasing space. And then finally, the bottom picture is the elevation on the southern end of the site. Here's the existing retail center that'll be demolished and then some of the existing sites around the subject property. Me, Development recommends approval of the rezoning from GC to OD for the self-storage facility with the following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201 that deal with stormwater management, utilities, traffic improvements, bearing of debris, streetlights, and landscaping requirements in addition to special conditions. Special Condition 9, Staff recommends a front setback of 50 feet, side setback, which this is different from what they request. We need, we want to give them a little bit more leeway. So we're proposing a 20-foot side setback reduction, which would allow them to pull the building further back behind the racetrack canopy and along that side property line. And then a rear setback of 90. Number 10 is a requirement for site lighting, be low-intensity environmental type lighting. 11 requires the dumpster to be surrounded by a brick enclosure. 12 requires the dumpster to have rubber lids. 13 is a provision for the 10-foot landscape buffer along the eastern and southern property line. 14 is for the HVAC units to be screened from any public right-of-way in adjoining residential properties. 15 prohibits neon signs. 16 prohibits the use of metal panel siding on the building facade. 17 requires for the building to be, have a fire sprinkler system. 18 prohibits the rental of U-Haul trucks and trailers. 19 prohibits outside storage of vehicles, RVs, trailers, and those types of items. 20 requires a developer to be responsible for water and sanitary sewer improvements. 21, the developer should be responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the Fire Marshal's Office. 22 deals with having street trees planted along Spring Road. 23 is dedication of the 25-foot right-of-way along the rear property line and that dedication shall occur simultaneously with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the building. 24 ties the rezoning to the site plan submitted. 25 ties the rezoning to the elevation. And then 26 is a list of additional stipulations from the applicant. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Martin?
Yes. I do. Because I was listening to what you were saying and following along and looking at our information here and kind of something similar, you said that there was something about a 30-foot setback to a 20. Is that?
Their site plan reflects a 30-foot setback and it's right on the setback line. The building is right on the setback line. Staff is proposing allowing them to have a 20-foot setback because they're behind a seven-to-eight-foot retaining wall on the north end of the site that holds up the racetrack property. And then they abut the amenity area for the apartment complex and racetrack on the eastern side. We wanted to provide them flexibility in case there are any site issues during development that they can slide that building back if they need be without having to adjust the drive into the site and then the new road along the rear of the site.
So is the front considered the side that faces?
The front is along Spring Road.
It is on Spring? Not the one that, on the street?
The front for the property is along Spring Road. Their front entrance for their building is going to be on the side that fronts the parking area and the road.
And so the rear would be the opposite of that? Is that?
The rear would be along, if you look at the site plan, it's along the detention facility back there.
And that's the south side?
Yeah. So the side that's along racetrack and the apartments back there is considered a side, side yard.
Okay. And then, so that part where the road is going to be, or the future possible road, is that a?
That's considered the rear.
The rear?
Yes.
But, so that would add to that, I guess, a buffer from the residential then? Is it additionally 25 feet in addition to the rear setback? I think it's, you said 30?
The rear setback is 90.
Okay, 90, okay. I'm getting, which side is?
So when that new road goes in, there'll be landscaping, a detention facility, and then a fire truck turnaround and then the building will be 90 feet.
And that's the side where the residential is? Is that what you're saying? Okay. So that's, I was looking at number five here where it says a reduction in the required setback from residential property from 50 to 35.
Right. So, but if you approve our recommendation of 20 feet, then you're allowing a reduction down to 20.
But that's that same side on the rear? Is that correct? Okay.
Well, no, that is on the side. That's, if you look at this site plan, it's on the top side of the site plan.
All right. All right. Thank you. I'm pulling that up. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Martin? Okay, thank you, Mr. Norton. Where, the applicant?
Yes, the applicant want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Doug Dillard with Purdy, Fries, and Torgumson, and we represent the applicant. I want to say that I've been doing this for over 40 years, as many of you know. It's been an extreme pleasure to work with Kenneth and Rusty to get these over 20 conditions worked out on what has been an eyesore in a problem piece of property. It's a flag lot. It's got a lot of development issues. We think this is a good solution. It's not only consistent with your overall long-range plan, but it's also a good use of this property and gets rid of something that's been an eyesore for a long time. So I want to thank the staff for working with us. I have representatives of the applicant here if you have any questions, but we've worked hard to get these conditions worked out. All of the conditions are acceptable to us and we would ask that you approve it in accordance with the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo these guys, the applicant has been great to work with when they first brought this idea to us. They're a little lukewarm, you know, we wanted some restaurant, maybe some more retail, and they tried to assemble some of those properties next to it and unsuccessfully they're dealing with an elevation change and there's all kinds of challenges with that property. They've been willing to do everything we've asked pretty much, including addition of retail and movement, moving the, repositioning the building, all kinds of things. So thank you so much for working with us on this. It's going to be a good-looking product. I can't wait for that building to go away. You said demolition starts tomorrow, is that right? If there's no further questions, I'm going to move to approve item 4D 2018-225 zoning request Z-18-009 rezoning from GC to OD conditional for the development of a 1,113,000, 113,895 square-foot climate-controlled self-storage building, 2.71 acres, landlot 810, 2520 Spring Road, 2520 Spring Road LLC.
We have a motion to approve. Need a second.
I need a second.
So, Bluestein seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 5 to 1 with Ms. Blackburn voting against. So it's approved 5 to 1. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
You can clock out now. You can do your...
No. I got you.
Thank you. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have none. Item 6, formal business. A 2018-253 adoption of the FY 2019 budget. Ms. Tammy Sallor-Jones, the background, please.
Prior to adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2019 annual budget, the city of Smyrna held two public hearings. The final public hearing was held on Monday, May the 23rd. The total budget as proposed is $92,388,289. Staff recommends adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget as presented.
Mr. Fiddle, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee, I'll turn this over to you. We've already had the required public hearings.
We have.
And we've had this on our work sessions and agenda meetings for three or four meetings. So, Mr. Fiddle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the work of the city administration at all levels, all the department heads working on the budget and then bringing it to the Finance Committee where we had three meetings prior to the two that you mentioned that were public meetings and we've had, I guess, a total of six or eight meetings. But it's been on the website for some time and we've had some interaction among the staff and the council on some of the details, but the public input part of our process is now complete. I want to thank Kristin Robinson and the young budget officer. I'm still going to call him Young until he, he likes that too, but we're very grateful, Jared and Kristin and the staff for putting together this solid package. Smyrna has a AAA bond rating for another year. We are not raising taxes for the 12th straight year. We're very proud of our rating and our situation. The budget is $92 million, as was mentioned, $38,289. We have it very tight categorized, so we are very proud of what we've done to account for all of the monies and continue to be good stewards of the taxpayers of Smyrna's relatively limited resources, but we're trying to manage it properly. And, Mr. Mayor, with that, I hereby move to approve the FY 2019 budget.
Motion seconded by Mr. West to approve the adoption of the FY 2019 budget. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 5 to 1 with Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item B, 2018-275, approval of the recording of the city official election results from the special election for Ward 6 held on May the 22nd, 2018. The candidates moving into a runoff election on July 24th, 2018. Adella Moore with 381 total votes, 28.54 percent, and Tim Goode, 324 votes with 24.27 percent. There were 1,436 total votes for all five candidates, which was 26.82 percent of the registered voters, 5,355 for Ward 6. I think Ms. Jones has some additional information for the record. Ms. Jones?
A special election was held on May 22nd, 2018 for the vacant Ward 6 city council seat. There were five candidates running for that position. A total of 1,436 votes were cast. A breakdown of those votes is as follows. Adella Moore, 381, 28.54 percent. Tim Goode, 324, 24.27 percent. Shaun Black, 301, 22.55 percent. Brant Suddeth, 256, 19.18 percent. Alexander Bakary, 66 votes, 4.94 percent, for a total, again, of 1,436 votes. And again, Mr. Mayor, that's 26.82 percent. The top two candidates, Adella Moore and Tim Goode, will have a runoff election and that runoff election is scheduled for Tuesday, July 24th, 2018.
I'll ask Mr. Fiddle, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee, to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a result of the public's input on this matter, I move approval of item number 2018-275, which is approval of the recording of the official city election results for the special election for Ward 6 on May 22nd, 2018. The candidates moving into a runoff election on July 24th, 2018 are Adella Moore with 381 total votes, as mentioned, 28.54 percent, and Tim Goode with 324 votes comprising 24.27 percent of the electorate. There were 1,436 total votes for all five cast, which was 26.8 percent of the registered vote total, 5,355 recorded in the Ward 6 election.
I have a motion to approve these election results. Do you have a second? Have a second, Ms. Blackburn, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the June 4th, 2018 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the June 4th, 2018 pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the May 17th, 2018 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, award bid RFP 18-20, community center flooring replacement to the lowest qualified bidder. The floor store, 1794 Trophy Drive, Marietta, Georgia for $77,526 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item E, authorization to award the finding, I'm sorry, authorization to approve the findings and subsequent installation of traffic calming devices, speed humps on Spring Drive.
I have motion to approve the consent agenda. Second? Motion seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 10, I'm sorry. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have a committee report, but I do want to mention one thing that we just passed on the consent agenda because there's somebody in the audience who worked awfully hard to make this happen over the last several months. Stephen Jones, if you'll please stand up. This, the speed humps on Spring, and we passed them last meeting on Carolyn, Stephen came to me probably, what, two years ago now and said, I've been living here 40 years and they are, it's just, it was worse, it's the worst it's ever been. People are going crazy speeds down those roads and we need something to slow them down. So we did a little background. We did some speed studies, which showed that most folks are going over 40 miles an hour and a 25 mile an hour, but some were going upwards of 70 and 80 miles an hour. And so based on those speed studies, our Public Works Director, Scott Stokes, recommended approval of putting these in and I'm just glad that we were able to. We got the sidewalk on Carolyn a couple of years ago, a year ago, and now we got this and I think the neighborhood will be a lot safer. So with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein?
I don't have a report per se, but I will say that the people I talked to kept saying, yes, I've talked to Stephen and he... yes, I've talked to Stephen, and he explained the whole thing. So, I'm like, okay, I give up.
He went door-to-door with the petition.
You did a great job at selling your project. With that, I yield.
Ms. Blackburn?
Uh, yes, I don't have anything to report, but I do want to say that I've had a wonderful, um, opportunity of visiting some of the Smyrna summer camps that are happening in the Smyrna area, and one I went to visit, um, last, on Thursday, I think it was, I went to visit, was the math and music camp. They were here last week, and I had such a wonderful time, and just want to say thank you for what they're doing for our, um, kids out there in terms of showing them how math and music, um, go in conjunction with each other. So, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I need to report that, uh, as of July the second, we will close the Smyrna Museum for a couple of weeks while we go in and do some inventory and, and shift some things around, get rid of a few things. In this year's budget, we have a substantial amount of, of money set forth to go in and revamp the entire museum. Uh, I don't know how many of you have been in there, but, uh, it's, um, it's, it's a museum that we've had for many, many years, and the, the intent is to simply bring it up to date, and as of the second of July, we'll close it for a couple of weeks to be able to begin that process. With that, Mr. Mayor, you...
Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, Mary Moore from the Smyrna Library has asked me to remind everyone that, um, the, the summer library reading program is, isn't just for kids, and it's still going on, and the adult librarians at the library want to get you adults out of your rut and get you to read something different than you normally, uh, do read. So, she, uh, they're saying you can pick up an adult summer reading entry form at the front desk at the library and pick out a suggestion from the entry form, and you'll be entered to win a gift basket. Baskets include free books, gift cards, and other goodies, and the prizes, prizes are sponsored by the Friends of the Smyrna Library. And, um, also, I'd like to acknowledge, um, a group of, uh, kids. It's a youth choir that's part of the Smyrna First United Methodist Church, where, um, our pastor spoke tonight, and I just wanted to acknowledge that about eighty-eight of those kids are, that are involved in that choir, uh, every summer go on a summer program, and they travel in different directions. The, uh, director of that program has been, um, working with these kids for thirty-two years, and she takes them all, uh, different places all over the country. So, children that participate in that program from seventh grade to twelfth have an opportunity to visit just about every, um, state in the United States, and it's a great program, and it's actually all, um, open to all children, um, that want to participate in the, in the choir. It's not just, uh, children from that church, and it's just a fabulous program for the kids, and I watched them sing. There were probably about eighty-eight of them, and there's probably about twenty-five adults that go also every year on the trip, and they did a fabulous job singing, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Ms. Fiddle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, noticed, uh, the Finance Committee completed its report, so I'll leave that, uh, with the congratulations to the team for putting that together. I also want to thank the community development team for putting the, uh, update in the code, and that, uh, gives us a fresh, uh, new start, and I appreciate that commitment to, uh, do so more, uh, often in the future. I appreciate that. Uh, and I do want to commend, uh, Representative John Carson, the legislature, and our own Derek Norton for leading the way on making sure that the hands-free law is now statewide. It'll go into effect July one. The Police Department in Smyrna has been very helpful in producing, uh, some literature and, uh, some, uh, tools to, to help. It's on our website, so feel free to peruse that, to download what you have on the website, but also, uh, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety has some, uh, pertinent information on it, and thank you for helping continue to make Smyrna safe.
Ms. Jones, anything else?
Um, Mayor, I also want to say thank you to our finance staff for the work that they did on the fiscal year nineteen budget. I want to thank all of our department heads and our staff for all of the great work that they do throughout the year. So, thank you very much.
Scott Anderson. Scott Cochran. Carrie Graham?
Yes, I'd like to just go over the election that, that is coming up. The, um, we will begin early vote on July the second through the, um, the twentieth, actually, July second and third, July fifth and sixth, at the main office. Also, July ninth and thirteenth, July fourteenth, which is a Saturday, July sixteenth and twentieth, which is Monday through Friday. Those hours will be eight to five, and they have, there are four, uh, precincts available besides the main office on Whitlock Avenue. There's East Cobb Government Service, North Star Church, South Cobb Community Center, and West Cobb Senior Center. Uh, just please come out and vote. Election Day is July the twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item ten is show calls hearing. We did not have anything. Uh, eleven is citizens' input. We got a couple of people that have signed up. Stephen Jones, twenty-eight, twenty-three, Spring Drive, Smyrna. Uh, Spring Drive Speed Humps is his topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as Councilman Norton, uh, has mentioned, I've lived on the Spring Drive Raceway for forty-one years, and it, as many of you know, is a half a mile long with one stop sign. I want to thank each of you for vot- voting in favor of it. This will slow down cars and even, I'm sad to say, the Cobb County school bus drivers on our street, because it's just a straight shot. Many citizens have wanted this for years and have been unable and have not been successful in slowing cars down. In the past years, we've had some of our Smyrna's finest police officers sitting down at the end of the hills with their radars, giving tickets, but they have a lot of response of other responsibilities, and they obviously can't always be there. In the past forty-one years, no Ward One councilwoman or councilman has been able to get the job done, and I'm grateful to Councilman Norton that he's gotten the job done, and he also helped team with me. He got the speed study going and was very significant in that area. I also want to thank Ms. Blue Steen for her support, and I appreciate her, appreciate her also. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. There are two young families on our street that live in Ward Two. I went to the one home, and I asked the, the mom, is there anything I can do for you? And her words were exactly, you can get some speed bumps or humps or whatever you call them on the street to slow these cars down, because she lives right at the top of the hill, and her children play soccer out in the front yard, and occasionally, unfortunately, the soccer ball go in the street, and those cars crest the hill, and it's a dangerous spot. Uh, just second, and lastly, there was another young mother down in Ward Two, and she also has children, and I walked up, uh, up the driveway and with the petition, and I said, hey, I'm Stephen Jones. I'm trying to slow the cars down. I couldn't say anything else. She interrupted me. She said, where can I sign? I want these things. So, thank you, and this will be, uh, just a wonderful thing to have. I know, um, many places in Smyrna have it, has them, and it's been very effective. So, thank you.
Nick Stolli, Stoli, Sto- Nick, Nick, fifteen fourteen, Justin Way, Southeast Smyrna, Georgia, three-oh-one-two-six, Oakdale Road between veterans and Highlands.
Yeah. So, you got really close. Uh, my name's Nick Stolti, so, second time. Pretty soon. Uh, wanted to get some clarity around what's currently being done to maintain Oakdale Road, specifically between Veterans Memorial and Highlands Parkway, as I mentioned. Uh, if you drive down Oakdale, you'll notice several potholes in the road. You'll also notice that the grass and the trees obscure the sidewalk. Uh, the road office has runners and walkers on the sidewalk, and I'm concerned that the lack of upkeep is creating potential hazards. Uh, aesthetically, it also just doesn't look very well-maintained and cared for. Um, as recent homeowners in the area were excited to be part of Smyrna, and as obviously Smyrna benefits from increased new homeownership, particularly in that area, I'm curious how it's going to scale its efforts to keep Smyrna beautiful and the sidewalks accessible. And I guess as a second point to that, if there are no plans to scale, would you all consider a partnership with, uh, Keep Smyrna Beautiful and, like, local homeowners to volunteer their time and materials as they do with recycling?
So, this is, um, between Oakdale and, uh, well, on Oakdale between veterans and Highlands, right?
Yeah. Yep.
That's a partnership with Cobb County DOT. I just had a conversation this, uh, meeting earlier that we held about that on the timeline for where the paving contract is. Of course, that's paid out of the sploß, as you know, and we just, in twenty-sixteen, approved the sploß. It started collection in seventeen. So, we're in the queue. It didn't help us today to feel like it's not being paid attention to, but I had that conversation just earlier. Be happy to share, uh, a bit about that.
Okay. Great. I guess we can talk offline.
But thank you for the partnership, and we appreciate, uh, what the neighborhoods are willing to do to be a part of, of the sidewalk improvement, because I agree, it needs it.
Yeah. Nobody wants to get by a copperhead.
I'd love to see which section of the sidewalk is in the city and the county.
Yeah. Yeah, well, so I talked to Cobb this morning, actually. Their highway, or their road maintenance department, and they said it was handled by Smyrna.
Yeah, well, that's easy.
Not hugely surprising.
I can tell you, it's not far as tonight, it's handled by Cobb County. Uh, if we can check that out, and we just need to go out and spray or, uh, main...
It's more so that the, the weeds have actually gotten to the point they're about as tall as I am. And, I mean, since we're close to the river, you've got copperheads.
Right, yeah.
All those is possibilities, and for runners, I mean, that could be lethal.
Yep.
So, yeah.
We'll soon have a DOT commissioner, too, for Cobb. It's, they're absent one, right?
Fair enough. Well, yeah, Ron, you and I can chat about it later. Thanks.
Thank you for taking time to come up here and let us know. Thank you. Okay, that was the last speaker for citizen input. Anything else? Did you, you didn't sign up the right, um, I, I'm gonna give you thirty seconds. If you come forward, tell us who you are, or maybe forty-five.
Okay, my name is...
Wait, wait till you get up here.
Sir, I have a lot to say, but I guess I got here a couple of minutes too late. My name is Nina Medina, and I live in the Spring Hill community where the proposed, or I guess where now there's going to be speed bumps installed...
On Spring Drive?
Um, they're going to be installed on Spring and Carolyn, which are the only two access points to our neighborhood. There's no cut-through in our neighborhood. People who are driving on these roads, uh, either live in the neighborhood or they're guests. I think as time has gone on, um, the neighborhood has changed and is continuing to change, but, um, you know, I feel that speed bumps are a nuisance. I wouldn't want one in front of my house. I think they cause a lot of problems. Um, I think if you really weigh the cons, the cons outweigh the pros. I don't think they're a magic bullet to stop people from speeding, and I really wish that we could try to figure out some kind of alternative. For me personally, I have a classic antique sports car that doesn't do bumps, so now I'm not going to be able to drive it, because there's no way that that thing is going to get over any kind of speed bump or, or speed hump. And additionally, um, from everything that I've learned about speed bumps, they just are really not that effective. People are going to maybe slow down as they go over it, but they're just going to either speed back up or possibly not even slow down. I wish there was some kind of more, um, active control, police out there giving tickets. I think that would really reduce some of the speeding. Maybe the signs. I know when I see the sign flashing, sometimes I go five miles over the speed limit. It slows me down. There are a few households in our neighborhood, too, where they seem to have cars coming and going all the time, and I wonder if maybe some of those households are, um, contributing to these people who are going far over the speed limit.
Okay.
So, I wish that they wouldn't go into the neighborhood. I feel like it's going to negatively impact my property values, and for, um, people like Carol, who's going to have one installed right in front of her house, I think it's going to also cause her a lot of extra noise pollution by the cars bumping over them, especially those that really don't slow down, which I'm sure will happen.
Uh, you know, I would say this, that, 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 these were recommended as a result of a, a traffic engineer looking at it. It wasn't so much the, um, the petition.
I did see the petition, too, which, uh, I looked at it today, and it was thirty households had signed the petition, which is approximately ten percent of the homes in the neighborhood.
And there, again, it wasn't, uh, we ended up doing this as a recommendation from our Public Works Department and our city engineer, who, this is the first time that I can remember where we have installed speed humps, um, at the requ- at, at their request and not through the petition route, so, um, you know, they, they're engineers, and they said this is what we need to do, and so...
Okay. I spoke with somebody from the engineering department who seemed to think that it probably wasn't going to be effective, but...
Absolutely.
I just think, I think it's a nuisance. I really do.
And, and, and listen, there, there's no doubt that, um, uh, the people that are speeding in that neighborhood are, are, are the residents that live there, because, as you say, there's no cut-through.
Not all of them. There are, there are some who are speeding through there. The school bus is definitely a culprit. The school bus goes through there like nobody else exists.
Yeah. But I would say that, that realistically, it is the residents that live there that are the ones that are speeding.
Some of, some of the residents that live there, definitely, because there's no cut-through.
Yeah, yeah.
People are only going there because they live there, they're a guest, or they're doing work or something, they're delivering something, but...
Yeah.
I think that it's unfortunate. I think they're a nuisance, and just let me know where to send the bill to if my car scrapes the bottom of, when I'm going over one of them, or, I mean, I guess I'll have to have it towed out of the neighborhood every time I want to drive it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. If there's no other bids to be brought before this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight-oh-seven.[1780.91][1780.91]